I am calling this meeting to order. Regular agenda item number two, invocation and pledge of allegiance. Mr. Perez.
Yes, Mayor. During our invocation today is Pastor Osuna will be leading us in our invocation. And please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance after the invocation, please.
Father God, we can be today. We want to thank you for this opportunity that we have to come before you and before our mayor, our city committee, Father, the city council. We ask you, Father, your direction, not only your direction, but your protection upon our city. Father, thank you for every citizen. Thank you for our police department. Thank you for our fire department. Father, we ask your blessing upon our schools, our teachers, everything that will be handled here tonight on this meeting. We ask, Father, that we would work together. We ask that the Holy Spirit will direct us. Father, we ask you you will give us guidance. We pray, Lord, that your protection will be upon our city. We pray for our mayor, for the city council, Father. We pray your direction, your protection upon their bodies, their homes, their families. I thank you for the citizens of Mission. Father, in Jesus' name we pray. We thank you. Amen and amen.
Mayor, leading us in the pledge of allegiance is Mayor of Memes Mustangville, the Honorable Angelica Esposito. She's a fifth grader from Memes Elementary.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Can we bring her up to the front and take a picture for her? For when she graduates from high school, she could... She'll have something to...
Mayor, welcome to City of Mission from the mayor mission. You're in the middle, Mayor. You're right there. You'll be the mayor for the day.
Is that good? Are we off-center?
No, the projector's...
Oh, the projector off.
The projector.
Turning it off.
Thank you. Cool.
Once we finish, we'll bring in the pastor.
One, two, three.
One more, please. Can we ask the pastor to come in for a picture together?
Thank you so much for your blessings.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Big smile, please. Thank you. At this time, the chair will recognize regular meeting agenda item number three, proclamation. Ms. Carrillo.
Mayor, Council, good afternoon. We have Mr. Jesus Sanchez, who is the executive director of the Children's Advocacy Center, and we have Mr. Rick Guerrero, board vice president, here with us. If they'd like to come forward.
Who else is with you?
And we also have Ms. Susan Henderson, the program director. The proclamation reads as follows. Horace Children's Advocacy Center of Edagro County was established in the year 2000 when a local two-year-old's life ended tragically from abuse. Her memory is kept alive by helping and treating children who are victims of abuse. Horace Children's Advocacy Center of Edagro County, a nonprofit organization, is one of 800 children's advocacy centers nationwide, one of 71 certified children's advocacy centers in Texas, and the first child-focused facility and community-based program of its kind in Edagro County, servicing child abuse victims ages two to 17 years of age. Horace, the mission of the Children's Advocacy Center of Edagro County is to reduce the emotional trauma of child abuse victims, which supports the prevention of child abuse through community, education, and promotes the effective prosecution of those who perpetrate crimes against children. Horace Children's Advocacy Center of Edagro County gives hope, healing, and justice to victims of child abuse by providing a safe haven with a child-friendly, non-institutional environment where young victims are not afraid to tell their story. Horace services include immediate crisis intervention, forensic interviews, forensic exams, family advocacy, mental health services, and community education. Horace, to raise awareness and funds for the organization, the Children's Advocacy Center of Edagro County is having the annual Vinos Wine Extravaganza at Embassy Suites McAllen Convention Center on Saturday, March 2, 2019, from 7:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., featuring delicious food provided by local restaurants, fine wines, and amazing entertainment by premier showband Satellite and the Renaissance Rockers. Now, therefore, we have declared by the city council of the City of Mission that they support this event to raise funds to support the Children's Advocacy Center of Edagro County in their mission to stop child abuse, one child at a time, and give hope, healing, and justice to child abuse victims, proclaimed on this 11th day of February 2019.
Counsel, I will entertain the motion.
Move for approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Sanchez.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Mr. Perez, my name is Jesus Sanchez. I'm the executive director for the Children's Advocacy Center, and with me is Mr. Ricardo Guerrero. He's our board vice president, also Ms. Susan Henderson, our program director, as Ms. Carrillo mentioned. I just want to take a few moments to talk a little bit about the Children's Advocacy Center and what we do. The Children's Advocacy Center is the first stop for children that have been suspected of abuse, severe physical abuse, or also if they've been witnesses to a crime. Our goal is to provide, restore the lives of these children, and provide hope, healing, and justice. We do this through victim support, mental health services, medical services, and also by facilitating the investigation and prosecution of child abuse cases with the district attorney's office, CPS, and the Mission Police Department. You know, we're proud of the partnership that we have with Chief Dominguez, the Mission Police Department, investigators. They're really vested in making a difference in the children of the community here in the City of Mission. We also just want to take the moment to thank you because you've basically welcomed us with open arms, and with our satellite office in downtown Mission. We've been able to serve more children. We actually saw an additional 394 victims as we just last fiscal year. We actually saw 1,618 children last year. Out of those, 265 came from the City of Mission, and so we're just happy with the continued support. Also, I want to just, as you heard in the proclamation, we're having our annual fundraiser Vinos. I'd like to send an invitation to all of you to come and join us. As you heard in the proclamation, we're going to have fine wines. We're going to have lots of tasty food. We're also going to have a salary auction, so just wanted, hope to see you there. And again, thank you very much for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all want to come over so we can take a picture?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your service.
Hi.
Thank you.
Really great job.
Thank you.
You're all three in the middle here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Again, yes, I have a chance, I go, I normally go, you know, I normally stop by for a little while.
Thank you.
Thank you. Regular meeting agenda item number four. Ms. Enriquez, chamber report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So, the Chamber of Commerce is preparing for Mission Day in Austin, which will take place tomorrow. We're ready to go. So, we are about almost 30 participants from the community, which is from the city, the chamber, and the EDC as well. This Saturday, we will be hosting, this Friday and Saturday, we will be hosting our Winter Texan Fiesta, and we're expecting about 2,500 participants from the community. As of now, the chamber has purchased meals for our Winter Texans, and they can pick up their tickets at the chamber. We only have about 270 left, and we just began giving out tickets. So, if you haven't gotten your tickets, go join us. Next Wednesday, the chamber will host the first Chamber Champions Ambassador Luncheon so we can start having a greater presence here in the Mission community to support other businesses. Regarding tourism, we did, I already met with our, the founding director of the Tourism and Hospitality Program at UTRGB. So, we are crafting a team of colleagues and experts in the fields that are very well-versed in data and visitors to see what it is, what it is that the average visitor visits here in the City of Mission. We also found that, of course, Mission and the City of Mission, medical is a leading sector, so there is, there is a, there is medical tourism that we can actually focus. So, that's an asset that the City of Mission can have. So, we're going to start focusing on how we can flaunt the medical tourism here. So, that's a great effort. We will also be inviting the hotel staff from the area, so inviting them to the chamber so we can give them an update on the things to do here in the area, as well as the food choices around the area, because we found that sometimes they're not very well, very well-networked in the area. So, we're going to give them a periodic update, which will be instrumental for our visitors. Regarding membership at the chamber, our retention rates came back. So, as of December, at the end of the year, our retention rate was 79.5 percent, and if you want to compare it to the last year, which was 2017, December, it was at 78.1 percent. So, we're gradually increasing retention.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Regular meeting agenda item number five, departmental reports. Any of the council members want to address any of the departmental reports? This is your time to address it.
I'm going to approve the departmental reports as presented.
We have a motion to accept the departmental reports as presented.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Regular meeting agenda number six, citizens' participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address us on any issue that is not on the agenda? Anybody in the audience would like to address the council under any issue that's not on the agenda under citizens' participation? Anybody wants to address us under citizens' participation, any item, any issues that is not on the agenda? I don't see anybody approaching the podium at this time. I will call, I am going to be moving some agenda items around to be able to process this meeting as more orderly as possible and convenient as possible for all citizens that are here. So, at this time, I'm going to call the agenda item 3.3, which is the board appointments to the cemetery, to the raw water committee, and to the workforce readiness committee. I'm going to ask Ms. Carrillo to address the agenda item 3.3.
Yes, Mayor, Council. I know that we've got several of the appointees here with us, so as I read their name, if they can please step up to the podium. Mayor's recommendation for the cemetery board, appoint Egna Flores, Gloria Martinez. These terms are to expire December 31 of 2019, and Orlando Delgado, term to expire December 31, 2019. And councilman Gus Martinez and interim city manager Randy Perez will serve in their respective positions. In the raw water committee, appoint Mr. Brandon Thompson, term to expire December 31 of 2019. Lois Kim and Jesus Rodriguez, term to expire December 31, 2020. And councilwoman Jessica Ortega Choa and interim city manager Randy Perez will serve in their respective positions. On the workforce readiness committee, appoint Dr. Carol G. Perez, Mission CISD superintendent. Yoela Rye Nava, Shoreland ISD Director of Career and Technical Education. George Flores, La Jolla ISD Career and Technical Education Director. Mario Reina, South Texas College Dean. Daniel Silva, MEDC CEO. Mr. Randy Morales, Ms. Lilia Guerrero, and Mr. Ephraim Reina. And these are the workforce readiness committee, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Carrillo. Do I hear a motion for the appointment? We have a motion to appoint?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Please be appointed as prospective members of the prospective committee that you have been assigned to, and if you all want to step up here so we can be able to take a group picture, and then...
Because I'm always cold.
Yes, sometimes it's too cold in here.
It's a little short on that side.
Ready? Okay, thank you.
We will call you when the meeting's in here.
Now, I will call the regular meeting to, on 1.0, and I will entertain the motion to untable item 1.1A, 1.1B, 1.1C.
I'll move to address these items and remove them from the table, Mayor.
We have a motion to untable. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion to untable and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. So, all three items are untabled. Ms. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. For the purpose of the meeting, since these items are related, I'm going to recommend that we describe each of the legal descriptions, describe each of the rezonings that's being considered, and then at the end, after having reviewed all three of them, open the public hearing at that time, if that's okay with the council and the mayor.
Thank you, Hyman.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, proceed.
Okay. As far as item 1.1A, this is a rezoning of a 7.06 acre tract of parcel X. Said parcel forming part of lot 16-1 and lot 15-1, West Edition and Shereline subdivision, Meadow Creek. This was area number two that was sent out in the exhibit that was sent out to the property owners, and the request is to change the property from PUD AOP to PUD R1. This is being considered for residential. The second tract of land that's being considered is a 26.724 acre tract of land out of parcel four, said parcel forming part of lot 14-1, 14-2, 15-1, 15-2, and 16-2, West Edition and Shereline subdivision, Meadow Creek. This was identified as parcel number three, or tract number three, in the mail-out that was sent out to the residents of Meadow Creek. The request is to change this property from PUD AOP to PUD R1. This is being considered for single-family residential. The third item is item 1.1C, is a smaller 1.682 acre tract of parcel, said parcel forming part of lot 14-1, 14-2, 15-1, 15-2, and 16-2, West Edition and Shereline subdivision, Meadow Creek. This was identified as parcel number four, or tract number four, on the mail-out that was sent out. The request is to change the property from PUD AOP to PUD R3, and the applicant for all three tracks is Olaguerbausa. And if the council's inclined to approve any of these rezoning requests, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. Mayor, Council, we saw, and we had a public hearing for these items at the previous meeting. I gave a history of Meadow Creek and how we got here, where we're at today, and there was a lot of discussion, both at the P&amp;Z level and at the city council level, and we've already, I guess, answered some of those concerns that were brought up. Some of them were drainage concerns, what's going to happen if something is to get developed. Well, the standards that are in place today are a lot stricter than the standards that were in place in the mid-'80s when this was first subdivided. And also, there was some issues about traffic and utilities also. Sure, I mean, once new development happens, there is some traffic concerns, but the city comes in at that point and looks at some viable solutions to address those traffic concerns. For example, on this one that you're seeing here, the applicant is proposing to do multifamily. My recommendation is a little bit different, though. I would recommend that instead of doing multifamily for this particular tract, I would recommend that we do townhomes. We see townhomes further south in front of the parking area of the clubhouse, and if you put the parking in the back, that takes the traffic away from the streets or having to back out into the streets, and people would have to circulate on the backside of the property and then exit onto Scenic Way further up north. We could do the same for the developments that are being proposed here today. We could impose that none of the cars back out into Scenic Way, because that is the primary entrance to Meadow Creek. So, there's different avenues that we can, I guess, go through to address some of the concerns. As far as some of the utilities, there was also concerns of the lift stations that were in place. To address those with future development, I'm sure the capacity of those lift stations is not going to be adequate. We would impose that the developer upgrade those existing lift stations to provide adequate source services for the proposed residence, should this be rezoned to residential. And also, there was traffic concerns along One Mile South where they're proposing to do commercial development. When this, if approved, and when this goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission and through my office, we would also request that additional right-of-way is given along One Mile South, for the widening of One Mile South. We've also talked to the school district, because in the morning hours and then in the afternoon hours, around 3:15 or 3:30, there's also a lot of issues with traffic that is generated when the kids are going to school and getting out of school. So, we've been talking to the school district, and one solution that we could have to get or to keep all the traffic off of One Mile South and off of Los Ebanos is for the school district to come up with a plan where they would keep the traffic out and maybe do a driveway along the west side and the north side of their property. Currently, they use this area for recreational. There is parking, employee parking along the north-east corner of the property, but we talked to the transportation director to see if there's a way that the school district can do something to help alleviate some of the concerns that were brought forward from the residents. And these are all ideas or measures that the city can take when considering any new proposed development. With regards to golf course, there seems to be a lack of interest in golf. 1,400 golf courses closed since 2001. There was a, and there was a recent article that I read, I've been doing a lot of research on this, and it's not an easy decision that the council and the mayor have here tonight, but golf courses close at a rate of one every three days. So, it's, there's just, I guess, I don't know if it's that golf has become too expensive. There's a lot of factors. Maybe the market, they built too many golf courses, they oversaturated. But I have gone to Meadow Creek, and can the golf course be brought up to par? Well, it can, but it's going to take a lot of, a lot of revenues, a lot of monies, and at the end of the day, it's kind of hard to predict whether or not the interest in golf will come back. So, staff's recommendation for the three items that are being considered is approval of two of them, recommending approval of the residential tract, larger tract, the 26 acre tract, recommending approval of the residential on the west side of Scenic Way. However, for the smaller tract, we're recommending denial of the proposal for R3, and we're recommending instead that a townhome community be approved for this area. Those are the three areas that are being considered. These items now before you.
Okay, this is a public hearing. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to cluster all the three public hearings together so you all can, can come up and state for against what you want to do, you know, as far as that is concerned. Obviously, we all know that we've already heard a lot of the issues that are here, you know, so I would like to see if there's any new issues or anything, and open it for the public hearing. So, please come up to the podium, identify yourself, and your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Jim McCollum. I live in 718 Lakeview Drive. I'm representing a group of investors that are willing to pay full price what he paid for the 18-hole golf course and the clubhouse. So, he'd get all his money back, keep it a golf course. You guys won't have to put half-man or whatever into the city, redo the golf course, the drain needs, the sewer, all that, lift stations, everything works fine like it is as a golf course. You start leveling it, you're going to have a problem. And we've got, the sheet that I gave you shows that we can, we can do it. So, I hope you take that into consideration. Thanks.
John Young, 805 Lakeview Drive. Mr. Acevedo was talking about the school, moving the driveways and stuff to alleviate the traffic problem in front of the school. My question is, is why should the homeowner's tax dollars be used to facilitate the sale of a failed property while all of our houses are depreciating? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Laurie Bowser, 318 Shereline Drive. We are requesting the rezoning of the permit for our IAS, 200 Plots 6, R1 in number 3, and the other one in number 10, C2 and R1. Through the subdivision, there's 407 lots, not inclusive of Seven Oaks Harbor Park. Only 55 lots from these four or seven lots are adjacent to the IAS rezoning. Many of those who are attendants to this meeting today, they've grown live in the adjacent to the plots involved, because they will not be affected directly with the rezoning approved.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to cluster all the three public hearings together, so you all can come up and state pro against what you want to do, you know, as far as that is concerned. Obviously, we all know that we've already heard a lot of the issues that are here, you know, so I would like to see if there's any new issues or anything, and open it for the public hearing. So please come up to the podium, identify yourself, and your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Jim McCollum. I live on 718 Lakeview Drive. I'm representing a group of investors that are willing to pay full price what he paid for the 18-hole golf course and the clubhouse. So he'd get all his money back, keep it a golf course. You guys won't have to put half a million or whatever into the city, redo the golf course, the drain needs, the sewer, all that, lift stations, everything works fine like it is as a golf course. You start leveling it, you're going to have a problem. And we've got, the sheet that I gave you shows that we can do it. So, I hope you take that into consideration. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
John Young, 805 Lakeview Drive. Mr. Alsebater was talking about the school moving the driveways and stuff to alleviate the traffic problem in front of the school. My question is, is why should the homeowner's tax dollars be used to facilitate the sale of a failed property while all of our houses are depreciating? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Laurie Bousa, 311 Shoreline Drive. We are requesting the rezoning of the permit of RAS 2 and the plots 6, R1 and R3, and the other one in number 10, C2 and R1. Through the subdivision, there's 407 lots, not in place of Seven Oaks RV Park. Only 55 lots from these four or seven lots are adjacent to the areas we rezoned. Many of those who are attendants to this meeting today, they've gone live in the adjacent to the plots involved, because they will not be affected directly with the rezoning approved. The back nine holes and the hole number one will be maintained, as also as the clubhouse. About the 55 lots adjacent to the rezoning areas has been a consideration along with the planning and zoning to leave 12 acres without modification in the area adjacent to the 55 lots, which the width is like 100 to 150 feet away, so they can consider a distance for the new construction. Okay? The entire property measures 135 acres of land, plus a construction of 44,000 square feet in an area of five acres of land. And is owned by a single owner, has no partners. The houses around this property do not contribute, or have not contributed to maintenance, management of it, nor do they have any right to use ownership, because this is private property. So many neighbors think that the clubhouse is a free and common community center, and is the responsibility of the owners just to open it for them. It should be noted that the subdivision does not have a community center. The building called clubhouse refers to a building where the golf business is operated from, and is governed by the hours of the scene. It's not part of the house's surrounding property, and it was not created for that function. The property, no, as Mission was golfed, only has one owner. And the area to be rezoned in plot number six, R1 and R3, they not have any boundaries in the subdivision, and the areas on number 10, the C2 and the R1, they have one, the 12 acres to hold there. And in this meeting, we are not considering, or we are not considering the meaning of opening our business. It's not in discussion. But the investors who will buy this property, the clubhouse, the nine holes, they will use it as a minimally. If this rezoning is not approved, we want to be clear that the business of the golf course will not be open, even if the back nine holes, they will not, we will not open if it's not approved. We don't intend to drain our personal resources to keep it open. Our intention is to seek with approval of the rezoning, the quickest and the least obstruction of the neighbors, city of ourselves, and this will give the investors an opportunity to recover the investment in the building and putting all the order in the subdivision. We know that the city council is concerned about this future subdivision, and we want to tell you that if this rezoning is not approved, then the value of the subdivision will certainly be affected by, it could be closed until it's sold. But if this rezoning is approved, the values of the property will maintain, and also the developers will increase the value. Is there a nine holes in the clubhouse open that everything closed? So let's say yes to the progress and improvements. This subdivision was purely structured from the beginning, and it did not have any homeowners' association in the hopes of the issue. That is to say, the 500...
Your three minutes are up, ma'am.
Well, I have my friends' three minutes, like they always, you just need two more minutes.
You need to get another person, Ms. Bousa.
Okay.
So we can start the three minutes.
I just need to present someone.
You need to get another person, ma'am.
Is there three minutes or five minutes?
Three minutes, sir.
No, Elliot, can you give me your three minutes, and somebody else?
It needs to be, it's three minutes per person, sir.
Okay, so I've got two more over there, so it's mine's time. I wanted to come talk to you all about what you're doing here today. It is very important that you listen to the people that live there. You know, I was in the commission's court back in 1981, 82, when we approved the subdivision, and we approved as it is, and then the city of Mission went ahead and annexed it. People that bought there have bought their home and expect to keep the same plat that they had back in 1982. It's very unfortunate that you all have to fall to some people that want to close that golf course. It's not the people that live those problems. I think the people that bought the Meadow Creek spotted with a golf course, and they have to maintain it. And if they cannot maintain it, then you all have to send somebody to clean it. And then every time you send somebody to clean the golf course, you charge that person that owns the golf course. I insist that you need to consider the people that live there. The people that pay, make the payments every month, the people that have just moved in. This is why I'm here, because two of my other friends bought there and built their home there and expected to see the place as it is today, not what is going to change. Look at, look at the investor, what he's doing. He's making you approve this today. I just heard that you all need a lift station there, and you're going to make somebody else pay for it. While he is getting this process, he should be working in fixing the lift, repairing the lift station, or, so be able to sell it. I insist that you all consider the people that live there. Feel sorry for them, because they are going to have some bad neighbors there. They didn't expect to have all those homes there that he plans to build, or somebody's going to build. I just, I'm just worried about what the city is going to be coming into, a big liability, because I'm sure these people are not going to sit there and say, "It's okay now." They're going to file a lawsuit. Every single person that lives there is going to file a lawsuit against the city of Mission, and they might not win, but you are going to spend a lot of money. You have no need to do that. I insist that you please consider denying his request. If he doesn't like the golf course, he can go ahead and sell it to the city, or sell it to somebody else, but please do not disturb the way that people of Meadow Creek's have their homes. They bought with that intention of having a nice golf course and a nice neighborhood, but don't, don't make them go through this. It's an agony that they are going through. I know what I'm telling you. I had some, a lady call me, and she was crying on the phone. So that's why I'm here. I wasn't, I mean, it's, I mean, I don't do these things. I did it because people are calling me, and they're crying on the phone, that they are going to have a new destruction of Meadow Creek's. So please consider them. Feel sorry for them. Don't take advantage of them, because it is not fair. So with that, I thank you all for listening to me, and to please, whatever decisions you make, you all are going to have to live with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bousa.
My name is John Garner.
Mr. Bousa, a little, hold on. Please sit down. Okay, so I can recognize your name and your address, please, for the record.
Yes.
You have three minutes, sir.
My name is John Garner. I live at 2505 Robin Avenue in McAllen. I am a golf course architect, land planner. I've been involved in both public golf operations, private golf operations, and I'm here to discuss, you know, the market correction that is going on in the golf business. Beginning in about 2005, or 2003, the statistics started noticing, or showing, that fewer people were playing golf. We didn't quit building golf courses because of that. In the year 2005, working for Mr. Nicholas, I was responsible for 25 golf courses under construction. We didn't quit building golf courses. With the economic crash, 2008, golf course design, new golf course design came to a screeching halt. Many courses didn't finish that were under construction. Since that time, the market's slowly crawling back, but different types of facilities. Today, I get calls to reduce golf. I'm working on two projects in California, reducing 27 holes to 18. And the new, the new courses that I'm working on are small courses. 12-hole par three, nine-hole par three. A different concept I'm working on in Utah, where we have three holes and a big practice facility. So golf is going through this correction that is not pleasant, it's just, it's just it's a business correction. There's too much golf for the people that play golf, and it's hard for owners, particularly in the private sector, or in the public sector, where you're waiting for someone to come in and pay you a green fee. Those are the ones that are suffering the most in recent years. I am free, sir.
Sir, please address the Council, sir. This is a public hearing, sir, okay?
Yes.
Please address the Council.
I am free.
Okay?
I am.
And we're in session.
Yes. The National Golf Foundation, for the year 2017, so the total supply of golf declined by 1.5 percent. Only 15 and a half new courses were open, and 205 and a half golf courses were closed. And this is a continuation of a correction of supply and demand. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Again, I remind you, identify yourself and your address, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is Robert DeGarmoore. I have a house at 1813 Meadowview Drive.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'm disgusted, you know, we're talking about business and stuff here. They made a bad business decision. They came here, they couldn't fund it. It's time for them to go. They've got an offer on the table to leave. He needs to go away, and you guys are going to reward him for a bad, a bad business. The guy obviously doesn't know what he was doing when he got here, and then he basically takes a big dump on my neighborhood, and then you guys let him go, or whoever, and build those abortions down there by the school district, those, you know, two-story concrete windowed blocks, and now you're going to put those in my neighborhood and block my view. That right there, I'm done, and I will vote every one of you. It'll be too late, but you're not going to have a job from me.
My name's Larry Wilson. I live 620 Lakeview Drive. He kind of stirred up a couple of comments about this, I keep hearing about this declining of golf, and everything like this, and I, I don't see it. And we have some friends of ours, and kids, and young kids, that all of a sudden, we see this Topgolf thing that's being brought out, you know, and it's expanding all through the United States. And some of those, so those kids are going over there, and they're playing, and now they say, "Hey, Larry, I'm interested. I mentioned, this is cool, I want to go out and play." Well, my golf course is closed right now. So I said, "Yeah, we'll have to meet them up somewhere else to try to start it, to help them learn to play the game." It, you know, I just don't understand, and it, and I did, because I can't see it. When I first came down here to this golf course, this golf course in particular, I had to, because I was not a member at the time, because I first got here, I had to go down there and wait on Saturday to see if I could get in. Most of them all signed up on Tuesday, and all the tea times were all, that was making money, making money. And yet, we get this things, this statistics and stuff like this over the United States, and I go out to Denver, I go to St. Louis, Kansas City, Dallas, and it's a hard place to get in to play golf. And there's, it's full, it's full all the time, and 27 holes and impounds, and it's always full. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
My name is Rich McMakin. I'm in 1600 Debbie Lane, and this whole issue is very personal to me. It became very personal when my wife died, when the last thing she said on the, on her deathbed was, "Thank you for buying Texas. We're originally from Minnesota." And the course where we came here, there was a pool, there was a social area, there was a lounge, it was beautiful. And the people were very friendly, they had leagues that we could get to know people. We did that, unfortunately, she can't experience this now, and I, I know my neighbors have experienced bigger losses themselves. So, it's personal to me, but what I was concerned about, I'm a retired CPA, so I don't know all about these development plans and city councils and what you have to go through, but I was wondering, there was a lot of valid, I thought, comments made at the zoning committee hearings, made by the public, and I'm wondering if those, those comments were passed on to the city council, or were they filtered, or were they, were they recorded? Were they recorded or just reported by the zoning committee? Because I think there was some valid stuff regarding the history of it. So that's my first point, and maybe you can just answer, was those passed on?
We do receive the minutes of the meetings.
So the minutes recorded all the public comments?
As far as I know, yes, sir.
Okay. And then I'm wondering, with being in my background, what is the process that the city council is going through to review the financial capabilities, reputation, experience of the, and the references of the developers or sub-developers? Is there a process that? Have you done a lien search? Is there going to be a performance bond required? I've heard that once the city council, if they pass it, it goes back to zoning commit, to the zoning committee. I don't know if that's, so it'd be helpful to know the process, because I don't know how you can determine that there's no detrimental effects of flooding and all those types of things without a more complete plan than what's been presented here. And that's where you find out who the developers are, and where the water flows are, when you see all the sewage hookups and all the sites. So, holy cow, before we talk that long. So, and I don't know if the city has the authority to approve the zoning without the approval of other parties, such as the county, and the watershed district, or whatever you guys call it here in Texas. That would be my concern, and what, what authority does the council have over the detrimental effects on residential home values of vacant facilities like the clubhouse and all that? And also the move from permanent open area, which was, seems permanent, seems to be a pretty permanent sound. So that's my point, and so I thank you for listening to me, and hopefully you'll consider that, and I hope these are recorded.
Yes, sir.
Don't take my picture, I got shorts on.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up, sir.
Good afternoon. My name is Richard Paddock. I live at 704 Lakeview Drive, and I sent some information to you, and today I sent to all of you, is, did you all get it and read it?
Yes, sir.
I'll give you three minutes for questions, if you want.
Sir, sir, this is a public hearing, so we need to listen to you, sir.
Do you understand what I was trying to point at? That is a flood plain, and that takes precedence over anything. The AO-P is not agriculture, open spaces, it is a reference and designation in your Mini Code 38, that says the designation should be AO for flood plains. Every fairway there is also designated as prairie and a reserve lake. So if you're going to take any kind of steps to do, any amount in there, any changes, you better get some very important people in there that know what they're doing.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Please come to the podium, identify yourself, ma'am, for the record.
My name is Sheila Redrick. I live at 105 Lakeview Drive. We are from South Dakota. We've been coming to the valley for 25 years now. Twenty of the years, we spent at Seven Oaks RV Park. Could not get in that RV park, you had to have reservations a year in advance to get a parking spot, because it was a golfing community. When we moved, we bought a home on Lakeview Drive. We golf, my husband and I golf probably five to six times a week. It's hard to get reservations to get on the golf course, because it was so packed. Not only are they affecting the homeowners, they are affecting the RV park, which is also, their attendance has dropped, people have stopped coming because there's no golf course. They come to that RV park because of the golf course. So when they're thinking about affecting just us, there's other people that they're affecting besides just the homeowners. And I think that's something to be considered, into consideration, that... And I think that's something to be considered into consideration, that there's a lot of people being involved. And it isn't just Texas residents, it's the winter Texans that are helping the community.
Mr. Mayor, council members and fellow residents, thank you for this opportunity to speak. My name is Dominic Raftery. I live at nine twelve Lakeview Drive in Mission in the Meadow Creek Country Club. Two points I'd like to make. You're, remember, I can't remember his name, he was saying that the playing of golf is decreasing and declining. I think the number of people that you've seen show up every time there's been a meeting is evidence that we are very eager to play golf and enthusiastic to keep this as a golf course. My second point is, if you accept this rezoning and the consequent decline in the value of our homes, you're sending a message to every possible winter Texan, don't come to Mission because your investment won't be upheld. They'll go to McAllen, they'll go to Farr, they'll go to Arizona, not to Mission. Thank you.
My name is Crystal Rose. I own a property at nineteen oh six Lakeview. My son owns a property on Crystal Drive. And I also manage properties on Oasis Drive, eight different units. In the length of time that all of this has been taking place, it's become more and more difficult to lease those properties impacting the investors that own those buildings on Oasis. I'm not sure what else is around that community other than the golf course. And the way I get people to actually live there is by the prestige of living on a golf course. There, it, there aren't stores around, there aren't shopping around, I mean, it's ways to go there. The reason they choose to live there is the golf course. Whether or not they're golfers, it's the beauty of driving into the golf course, which in the last, I, I've managed the properties out there for eight years on Oasis Drive, where I used to be able to get a new tenant in less than thirty days. In this last year, it's taken me five or six months to get a new tenant in there. It looks terrible when you drive in. There's no other reason to be in that area in this community other than the golf and the community that these people provide.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Catherine Raftery, nine twelve Lakeview Drive. We bought our house because it was, we had a beautiful view. I'm not a golfer. My husband wasn't a golfer when we came here. He is now a golfer. We had a beautiful view, we're right in the epicenter, right there on Lakeview Drive, where someone is now proposing to build, what did you say? Townhomes? No, thank you. No, thank you. We don't want townhomes. We don't want any homes outside our back door. Mrs. Bowser said, only the people in Lakeview Drive, fifty-five houses, I think she said, were affected. The entire Lakeview, the entire Meadow Creek Resort is affected, from Lakeview Drive to Debbie Lane, everybody is upset about this, not just the fifty-five units on Lakeview Drive, that's the first thing. As Jim said, there's an offer on the table, the residents, some of the residents, we're going to take it over and we'll bring it up to scratch. We have many people living there who have volunteered their services and their industrial machines to the Bowser's and now to this consortium. People will be sympathetic. People will come back to Lakeview Drive, people to Meadow Creek to play golf. People will come back. It's nonsense to stay that that is a dead golf course. People were golfing there before and after the Bowser's took it over. And when they're gone, there will be people, hopefully, there will be people golfing there again.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning?
Hi. My name is Mary Jo Schleif and I live at seven eleven Lakeview Drive. And I know a lot of these points have been brought up, but I've got a little different angle. One of them is the economics of this. And that is the fact that I've checked the real estate websites and our homes are losing value at a thousand dollars or more every month. Now, if you look at that, when we are reappraised, our value will be down, therefore our real estate taxes will have to go down. That means less money to the city of Mission. And you've got to care about that. And those of us that are trying to sell our homes, if it is not a golf course anymore, we probably won't even stay in the city of Mission because we need to find a place where there's a golf course with homes. So it makes us quite sad. I'm another one who's a winter Texan, and the taxes that we pay are higher than anybody who's a resident. I'm sure you're aware of that, but just to, to let you know, we don't get the benefit of being over sixty-five and having to pay less taxes. And also, my husband's a disabled veteran. You have a great tax cut for that, but because we maintain a home in Minnesota, we aren't able to take advantage of that. The other thing I want to bring up is, it was mentioned about the traffic. And I would suggest, if any of you have never taken a drive from Los Ebonos down to Inspiration on mile one, I think you would be appalled to see what has happened. We talked about the school traffic, yes, indeed, that is there. It was there when we came today to the meeting. Every morning, every evening, two and a half to three hours, solid two blocks of cars. So that's kind of scary and we all try to weave our way home. Across the street, we have townhomes being built. I'm not sure how that got set up, but I can't believe that they aren't here arguing the point. They have a whole lot more to lose than we do. There's three townhomes now. They are supposed to be a plan state. Look out the window at a golf course. And if you went on their website, PalmsMeadowCreek.com, you would see that they're showing people driving cars and walking their babies and golf carts all in the backyard of, behind these townhomes. It's never going to happen if you rezone this. Also, if you continue down the road, we have the entrance to what used to be our beautiful golf course, and you're going to look through a very shabby fence and look at, it looks like a wheat field or something. That's where they want to put the commercial, the businesses. And if you put a strip mall, after all this traffic going into the townhomes and the school, and then you make a strip mall just past that, all in one block, you are going to have so many cars and accidents that it's going to be really a shame. And you're going to have to take responsibility for that if you decide to pass this. So I hope that you decide to vote no. Thanks.
My name is Ron Hawkins and I live at eight oh two Lakeview Drive. I live there with my wife. Started to come down here a few years ago. And the reason I came down here is because I was told that Mission, Texas was friendly to winter Texans. I go to a church in McAllen. Two weeks ago, there were two hundred, I'm sorry, four hundred and seventy winter Texas people there at one service. My point is, all those contribute taxes, spend millions of dollars throughout Texas in part of McAllen, Mission, et cetera. And it seems to me that, the only thing I'm asking you to do is, is put some weight behind the winter Texans, what they're saying. I'm not asking for a miracle, I'm not asking you for favors or anything else, but they all deserve to be heard. And I'm, I'm hoping you listened. I'll just make one comment, I live here all year round. Sewer systems don't handle the water here. We got that nine inches of rain, where you want to put that strip mall? One mile road was closed, you couldn't get a car through it, water. Lakeview Drive flooded. I have a high drive and the water was approximately that deep coming up off the road. And that happened when the sewers didn't handle it. Took about eight hours and went away. And I'll tell you, the only thing that did save my house from water were those ponds in the, in the golf course. And it took about two days for all these ponds to go down, but they soaked in and thank God, it saved my house from water. My waters, my house has never been flooded, to my knowledge. And I'd have to say it's because of the drainage system in the golf course. I hope you listen to what I said and I appreciate your time. And I hope this honorable body does put some weight behind the winter Texans, what they've said, because they're important to the, to the state of Texas. I mean, like I said, that church I go to, every week, it's packed. And even the second service, two hundred and twenty winter Texans. First service, another hundred and fifty. There are a lot of us around and, and actually, there's a lot of the people in this room that go there. So it's not just McAllen. I thank you for your time.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning?
Ladies and gentlemen, excuse me, I won't be long.
My name is Darlene Schaefer and I live on Casino Drive, which is in that retention lake behind the clubhouse. We get ten, twelve inches of rain and that lake comes up eight to ten feet. And it's only draining a portion off of number one and some of nine and eight. You put streets and houses on those, on those fairways. And right now, they're like retention lakes. That water does not go into the storm drains. But if you put streets and houses on those lake, on those fairways, all of that water is going to come into that retention lake. I paid thirteen hundred a year to FEMA because of where I live. And my house has never flooded, ever. I think if you pass this and they put those houses and streets in there, I'll probably have to move because my house is going to be underwater. Thank you.
My name is, uh, Flavio Cruz. I live at twenty fourteen Lakefront Drive, Mission, Texas. I take pride in my neighborhood. And it is very sad to, as have, as someone previously mentioned, that he let, he let that golf course go. In my opinion, I don't think he was truly a golf lover. He probably bonded within ten, with, with exactly what he's doing now, to build, make money, houses, houses. But when I came down here, I've been, I've been there at Meadow Creek for thirty years. I've seen the owners. I think the Taiwanese had it for thirteen years and they, they were doing a good job. But my friends who live in Michigan, because the reason why I chose Meadow Creek was because of the beautiful greenery. I don't play golf. But when I bought there and I built there, it was beautiful. So it is a shame that it has been let go. I, I support my neighbors. I heard a business offer. I think it's a no-brainer. I think, I think you should know that. All right? That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Olga Gervais. No hablo inglés. Este, no sé si me puedo traducir.
I was going to, I'll add a lot of Thracian to the interprets.
Solamente para decir. Yes, you know. El campo de golf es de dieciocho hoyos. The golf course right now is empty, boss. Que no estamos hablando de la supervivencia de un campo de golf. We are not talking about the. Que, que continúa el campo de golf. That the golf course will continue in the nine holes. Ahorita está cerrado. Right now is closed. Y seguirá cerrado si no hay una rezonificación. And it will continue close until this, uh, rezoning or something like. Lo que queremos es. What we want. Nine hoyos y la casa club. Is that the back nine holes plus hole number one plus the clubhouse with any modification. That was, we are taking and talking about that since the beginning. Un negocio que ya no es negocio, se tuvo que cerrar. One business that is not business, we know, we need to close it. No hay manera de mantenerlo. There's no way to maintain it, we know. Y hay personas que están interesadas, no en dieciocho hoyos. There's people interested in buying, but just as nine holes as an amenity. Entonces lo que estamos pidiendo aquí es la rezonificación para mantener nueve hoyos, el hoyo uno y la casa club. We are just asking for the rezoning of the area of some holes from two to nine and reminding without any modifications, the back nine, the hole number one and the clubhouse. No queremos afectar mucho a la gente. We don't want to affect the people. Si cierra el campo. We just want, because if the golf course closes, then it will be an affection. Entonces sí se verían afectados. And then also, if the mine is closed, it will be a big affection there. Estamos manejando el mismo sentido. We're trying to move the same sense. Dieciocho hoyos cerrado todo. Nueve hoyos y la rezonificación. Could be like eighteen holes but all closed or nine holes of the rezoning and nine holes open under the rezoning. And also the driving range is not modified. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. My name is Ed Thomas. I live at thirteen oh two Lakeview Drive. I've heard all this talk about, you know, the golf course and everything. It was a very nice place to be up to about three years ago. When these people took over, they did not want to have a golf course, they did not take care of the property. And now, they say, well, we'll keep the nine-hole golf course. All these people here did not build a house or live here to have a nine-hole golf course from somebody that knows, does not know how to run one. So I'm vehemently against this rezoning because it's going to affect our home values and it's going to affect our community, they killed our community. We have nothing to do there. So hopefully, you will not vote for this rezoning again.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request?
Good evening. My name is Thomas Morgan and I live at six oh two Lakeview Drive. And I've talked several times to the commissioners, commissioners on the planning and zoning. And I gave you a letter, which I assume you have read. I've also given you photos showing you what will happen to the exterior of my home if the commercial development is allowed to go in there. And I'll make this very short. You've heard all of these statements before. The point I would like to make is appeal to you personally. Would you like this next to your home? Would you like to have given up twenty, thirty years of your time here in the valley? Because two people couldn't make a good business, a business decision. I have worked at three different golf courses. In Minnesota, they have been successful. They're only playing for six months a year. I realize the economic crash that this gentleman was referring to was vital in golf going up and down. But golf is a business and it can recover. You all know that businesses go up and down. So I'm saying to you, A, this community will support a golf course. And the people that we talked to up north will come down here. Will they come to Mission? Question. I don't know. On the other hand, and as I referred to you before, I would like you to think of sitting in my window, looking at the lights from three hundred yards away and having that come into your home every night. Would you like that situation in your neighborhood? And again, I made the appeal earlier about how all of the people in this community have welded together and have become a good community. And because the golf course has been deteriorating, they're moving out. The community which is valuable, that golf course community which is valuable to the city of Mission is deteriorating. And it's going to disappear. And you're going to have basically roll houses, big block cinder buildings in an area that was a vibrant, efficient and very supportive community of the Mission, city of Mission. Thank you very much.
This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request for rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this request for rezoning? Unless you have something else, sir, I will open up. Unless you have something new, sir, I will continue opening the public hearing, but if you don't have nothing new, I am closing the public hearings.
No, I've got new stuff to add.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Gary Bevkey at 1117 Lakeview Drive in Mission. We've been at our address for 10 years. We've had great golf, great enjoyment of all the activities and everything, until the Boozers took over about three years ago, and literally ratted in playground. They shared with me after they had been there a year, excuse me, a month and a half, roughly, at a dinner engagement, and they were showing me what areas, I'm an architect, they were showing me areas that they were going to develop back after they only had it for a month and a half. And so if there's anything they say about running the thing down, or they couldn't support it, they didn't want it to succeed. I've developed property all over the world, actually in Belgium, France, in Europe, and I did a lot of major hospitals. I've been involved in planning, zoning, watershed districts and everything, and I think you need to look at the description of, you started out with, these were PDU's, AUP, permanent open space districts. And that required a lot of planning. They put in the housing, they included the golf course as part of the drainage system, and the retention ponds and everything was part of a planned unit development. So you and the planning department need to go back and look at what your definition is for planned unit development, because you're asking for a PDU R, parentheses, R1. That's a PDU. The next one is PDU R1. Next one is the same thing, and I'm going to also mention number 4.1, which also was moved to the bottom of the list, which is also part of this. All those are PDU's. Where is the planned unit development? There is no surveys, there's no water, I mean, the surveys that were ripped up on the screen don't even show me very much that I saw. And I said, in addition to that, they don't have any watershed, there's no drainage issues, there's no definition of what is going on in those parcels. This last one, number C, the reason they changed that is because you can't even get multifamily residents on that property, because it's not even loud enough. And that's only from my quick few seconds that he put it on the screen, because I have not spent a lot of time. But I think you really, as the representatives for our city here, you need to really think twice of what you're doing, because the community is going to really rebel against this.
Sorry to interrupt, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This isn't a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? This is a public hearing. Anybody in favor or against this rezoning? Since nobody's coming to the podium, I am going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to ask our council to on table 4.1, by entertaining the motion. Do I hear a motion? To on table 4.1.
How much want to?
We have a motion and a second to on table 4.1. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, Mr. Savelle. Which one do you want to start with?
I guess just for clarification of the audience, 4.1 was the item that was presented at the previous city council meeting. The public hearing was held for that item, therefore, there's no need to consider another public hearing for that item that was seen at the last city council meeting.
Which one are we going to address first?
We can start with 4.1. Let's start with 1.1. This is a 7.686 tract of parcel X. This is the property that was last seen by the city council at the previous meeting. This property is being zoned for commercial development, and that would be neighborhood commercial.
For that, say 4.1, right?
This would be 4.1 on today's agenda, correct?
And we're all.
For clarification, we are addressing, and I'm calling for 4.1 agenda item, for those that have a copy of the agenda, and for those at home that are reviewing, since we are live on Facebook. So again, I want to clarify, 4.1 is what we're addressing. So continue, Mr. Savelle.
Yes, on this item, staff is recommending approval. There were some concerns about whether or not we can rezone a PUD. This is something that we extensively talked with our attorneys. This is a PUD that, the current zoning for this area is PUD agriculture open permanent. There is a provision in the AOP, in the PUD AOP, that allows for the reclassification of areas within the golf course. That is the reason that we are considering this, and we're recommending approval of this item 4.1, going from PUD AOP to PUD C2. Item 4.1 is now before you.
Thank you. And I'd like to open 4.1 for discussion by any of the city council persons, please.
I have a question, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Addressed to our legal counsel. Just for the sake of information and for the public, can you explain to us what PUD and AOP is? I mean, it's been tossed around a lot tonight.
Well, PUD is a public unit development, and it has, and it's basically, its purpose is for zoning.
And here you.
Am I on over there?
Yeah, it's on. It's on. You see it talking to.
PUD is a public unit development. When it was developed, it was classified as that, and basically, it means for zoning purposes, that would be the way it would be zoned, subject to whatever changes. There were plats that were developed that involved, if I recall correctly, there's three plats that are involved with this that were developed. They did not include the golf course within either, any of those plats. So it's within the PUD, but it's classified or zoned as AO permanent. So.
This one, this one.
You might want to go up there.
Okay.
We're going to ask our city attorney to come to the podium, so maybe we can get a better, so everybody can hear. If you all could help him out and facilitate the process, please.
If I understand, Mr. Martinez, you've asked the question as to what a PUD is.
We need to get louder.
It's a public unit development.
We give them way.
I am trying to do that. Okay, I've got to get closer. Okay. It's a public unit development, and it's zoned, it's zoning within that allow. When it was approved by the city commission, it was approved as a total development, a public unit development, and it was zoning, very zoning within that public unit development. The part that is in question, that is, the golf course areas, was zoned agriculture open permanent, and it was not part of the, there were plats of the developed areas, meaning the residential areas, that were platted, it's not part of those plats. It's part of the public unit development, but it's not part of those plats. And so it's open, it's open land, and I'm.
I'm sorry. It says permanently.
Can we have order, please?
Can we keep the comments down, please? Please?
See, it's, Mr. Martinez, I'm addressing you and your questions, so if you have any questions on that. So it is open, it can be, it can be rezoned, subject as the PNZ is requesting, as it has been.
Would new developer need to file new plats?
Yes, they would have to, if they're going to develop that, they'd have to file for new subdivision plats and meet all the requirements that would be required at that point in time, which would require issues regarding any flood zone issues or FEMA issues and other zoning requirements of the city of Mission and other requirements to meet any other governmental units.
So this council could make it, could require that any drainage or flood issues be resolved in, as condition of approving a new plat?
Well, it would have to be subject, the plat approval would have to be subject to meeting the requirements.
A plat cannot be approved if the subdivision is within a flood zone?
It cannot.
It cannot.
And this is in the flood zone?
That's my understanding, is that it's.
Can you all hear in the back?
Is that.
Can Ms. Garza, could you repeat, for the purpose of the audience's and for the people that are watching on live?
The question was whether we, any flood issues, we need to be addressed when applying for a new plat for new development?
And the answer is yes, because it does have to, the subdivision plat would have to go before the drainage district, which oversees, which oversees the drainage system or plans for a subdivision, and has to be approved by the county. The city does not do that, the county does that. And they use the prerequisites or the requirements that are issued by FEMA. So if there is a particular, and I'm just going by my experience, not, I'm not speaking for the rest of the council. If there's, if there is a flood issue, that has to be, it has to be fixed or resolved before the plat is approved. That's my understanding.
And that is correct. And we looked at the four tracts of land that are being considered, and they're actually on the higher end, and they're all outside of the floods. I mean, we still need to go through the plating process where they would get more adequate elevations, but what they've submitted thus far has them in a zone B, all four of the properties. So that would leave these properties outside of the current flood zones. But also, the county irrigation district has to sign off on any plat that gets approved by the city, as does the irrigation district. So earlier, there were some comments about other entities being involved in the process, and the answer is yes, they will be involved in the process. Those entities have to sign off on any new development.
So if there's a flood zone, if there possibly is a flood zone or flood area, the county and the watershed district can have some type of criteria to resolve it, and if, in fact, if that's not cost-effective to resolve, then they can't plat.
Right.
Well, I'm just, I'm asking a question, sir, please.
That's potentially true. I mean, there's always ways of doing it, but it may not be cost-effective, like you said.
No. Any other city council members have?
Any other questions, it may.
Yes. Mr. Cho, any questions?
No.
Mr. Plata? Ms. Garza? Last question?
I'm, I am a little concerned about that permanent status of that area, and so I just, I don't know if it would be okay to go into executive session, just to get a legal clarification on that zoning.
Our council can go into executive session for legal advice at any time under any agenda item. If you wish to do that, I will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are going to go to executive session, and we'll be back as soon as we get our legal I will entertain a motion to reconvene under executive, from executive session pursuant to VTCA government code section 551.001. Is there a motion? We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We do continue on item, agenda item 4.1, and I'm going to ask our legal counsel to deliberate on what we.
I wanted to explain that we're going to require, if you're going to do anything different from what the PNZ did, as I understand, the PNZ approved the zoning changes. If you're going to deny the zoning changes, you will need what's been called a supermajority, or means that you'll need a three-quarters vote, or basically, in this case, a 4-1 vote to change what the PNZ did. If you are approving what the PNZ did, then you just need a simple majority. Any questions on that? Okay.
Any questions from the council? I will entertain a motion from any other board that would like to do a formal motion.
As to 4.1, the proposed rezoning of commercial, I make a motion to deny that request, and I make a motion to deny that request and have it be simple residential.
R1T.
R1T?
T.
R1T.
Okay, you, Mr. Martinez, for clarity, you are making a motion on ordinance 4761. Am I correct?
That is correct.
Am I correct, Ms. Perez?
Yes, sir.
4761. As stated, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, and this I open and prefer to discussion among the council? Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Mayor, I find, I find commercial in that area, in that hard corner, was a school down the road, and certain individuals living right next to it, it would not be a proper idea at this juncture. Perhaps down the road, you know, perhaps years from now, but right now, I don't think commercial is, that area isn't suited for commercial just yet. If there's any type of development in terms of residential townhomes, I don't see how that would encroach any neighboring fair citizens.
Okay. Any other comments from any?
And just as a side note, Mayor, I just want to point out that that particular area is in the zone X, which is the non-flood zone. Is that correct, I mean?
That is correct. Only the darker shaded area is the area that's in the flood zone, so the area that we're considering here right now is the area that's circled at the corner there of that map, and it is outside the flood zone.
Any other comment? I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign, and a vote against.
Do you want to?
Supermajority, the motion passes.
Do you want a hand vote, or?
Yes, let's give it a hand vote. We're going to call for a hand vote. All those in favor say, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise the same hand. Motion carries. Ordinance 4761 is approved as presented by Mr. Martinez. I will call now for item 1.1A.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, item 1.1A is a rezoning request by Mr. Ola Guerra to rezone the property from PUD AOP agriculture open permanent space district to PUD R1 single-family district. On this particular item, this was approved unanimously by the PNZ. Staff and our city manager are recommending approval of this tract of land, and it's not the one on the map, virtual, we'll get it right, but we're recommending approval of this tract of land. This is a 7.06 acre tract. We're recommending approval going from PUD AOP to PUD R1. Item 1.1A is now before you.
Do I hear a motion for approval or to consider ordinance 4762?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second to approve or disapprove ordinance 4762. I'll open and prefer the discussion from any of the council members.
Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Martinez.
Now, understanding that this is agriculture, and it's, if it possibly is approved to go to R1, what other restrictions can we impose upon any future developer, other than they must maintain proper drainage and?
By rezoning it R1, this opens it up to what is allowed in a single-family residential district. The permitted uses are one single-family lot, or one single-family home per lot, so it would just be.
Would a respective homeowner be liable for their own drainage, or would? Would the, a respective homeowner be liable for their own drainage or would, would the developer have to do that all in...
Any drainage improvements would have to be handled prior to the city council approving the plat. The plat will come before the city council for final approval and all those drainage requirements must be addressed prior to the council approving it for the last time.
And this is only single family, not, not multi?
This is only single family, this is not multifamily by any means.
Thank you, Hymen.
Any other comment from any other council persons?
Yeah, just to kind of clarify on, on Hymen's thoughts there was that, yes, the council has two opportunities to view the subdivision plat the first time around. It's a preliminary plat approval and, and that's where all, all the, the, basically the requirements are, are set out. All of those requirements need to be in place and, and completed and then it comes back to the city council and then that's when they get a, a final plat approval. So they can't say they're going to do something and then not do it because they will not get the final approval. So that's, you know, that's comforting to know that, you know, we, we will impose or the drainage district will impose their requirements to comply with, with drainage issues and then we have the opportunity to, to look at it twice.
That is correct.
Any other questions from any other council person? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance 4763 is approved.
4762, Mayor.
Correction?
4762.
4762, stand corrected. 1.1B?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Item 1.1B is a larger tract. This is a 26.724 tract of land that's being, that's for consideration to be rezoned from PUD Agricultural Open Permanent to PUD R1 Single Family. And the council, or the Planning and Zoning Commission did review this request and they did unanimously approve to rezone this to PUD R1. Staff is also recommending the approval of this item, item 1.1B, to R1, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing. Item 1.1B is now before you.
I move to approve as presented by staff.
We have a motion and we have a second to approve ordinance 4763. Any discussion by any of the council?
I have a, I have a comment, Mayor. Now, this is going to, obviously, if it's developed, would disenfranchise some of the holes. Is there a way to instill into the plat that any, all the other holes, like the south side, that they be maintained to a certain degree as to not fall awry?
I don't think there's a way that you can put some encumbrances on this development. I don't, I don't see there being a legal way to do that.
Let her refer to legal. You want to come to the podium, sir, please? Unless you have a mic over there.
It's not loud enough, Mayor.
We need to correct it. Please tell him.
Okay, I'll try to speak into this so everybody will hear. All right, the question is what?
Can we put it in like a plat note specifying that the nine golf holes that are going to remain open be held to that, to remain open?
Can you, can you put it in the...
I don't, at this point in time, when it, we're talking about the rezoning of the specific tracts that have been defined, that is before the commission tonight. I don't think you can put, as far as the zoning is concerned, you can put any conditions on that now. When it comes to plat approvals, then that's a different matter.
On the plat approval, we can't.
That could be a different matter, yes.
We're in this one.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. Please point out which area, you've got to describe, but you, for all of us in the audience, we'd like to know on that map, which by the way is incorrect, what is exactly you're talking about now? I'm not, I'm confused, but you've got a gray area on the left, a gray on the top.
We're in the area that's shaded gray and outlined in purple.
Thank you.
Do you have a pointer by any chance?
No.
You have a pointer?
Virgil's my pointer over there on the side.
Virgil, will you point?
There it is. He's pointing to it now.
There's a side location pointing to it.
Yes.
Yes.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance 4763, am I correct, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor.
Ordinance 4763 has been approved. 1.1C, Mr. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Item 1.1C is for consideration of the rezoning of a property from agriculture, of from PUD AOP to, the request was to rezone this to PUD R3. Now, on this particular item, staff is recommending approval of PUD R1T for townhomes. We're not in support of the R3 request. Our city manager is also in support of the R1T request. The PZ did vote to approve the item for R3s, however, staff and the city manager have a different recommendation. Item 1.1C is now before you.
I'll make a motion, Mayor, to deny the R3 request and leave it, and leave it simply as the R1 residential, single family.
R1 or R1T?
R1T, R1T.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to deny and, but approve ordinance 4764 with a R1T zoning. Any questions by any other council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance 4764 is approved. Now, we'll call item 2.0, the consent agenda, keeping in mind, council, the 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7. Well, you can, and let me hold on back.
You just need to get very close, but it's not...
Thank you. Just to be sure that, that we had the...
Well, we have, we have a chance to say, all of a sudden it says we'll change, change the streams, pond, and all of course, so that when, so that...
Mayor.
They're not going to change anything.
It's a chair's prerogative to wait a couple of minutes.
So indeed.
I would like to ask those that are in, in the chamber to please sit down and remain, sit it down, please. Anybody else, if you would please exit so we can continue our government process, please.
Again, I would like to call for consent agenda 2.0, keeping in mind, council, that you can ask for any of the agenda items to be approved, 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, 2.4, 2.5, 2.6, 2.7. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
And we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Resolution number 1584 has been approved. Resolution number 1585 has approved, been approved. Resolution 1586 has been approved. Resolution 1587 has approved, has been approved. Resolution 1588 has been approved. Am I correct, Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor.
Call for 3.0, 3.1, adoption of an ordinance, Mr. Acevedo.
Mayor, Council, item 3.1 is the adoption of an ordinance rescinding an affidavit evidenced by document number 942755 that was filed in 2000 at the county court, county court's office. And this document was an encumbrance. The, the people that owned the property also owned two lots there in Fiesta Village. The lots are not side by side, but one is in front of the other and the encumbrance that was imposed on the two residential lots was that they cannot be sold because the applicant had installed a, a shed in between both of the properties. They signed an affidavit that if the properties were ever sold, that they were going to be sold together. However, come 2019, they have since removed the shed. The, the shed was moved years ago. There hasn't been a shed, so the encumbrance was lifted, if you will. And the applicant is now proposing to sell one of the properties and when they went to closing, they discovered that there was this document that was preventing the sale from happening. This shows a, an exhibit where the structure that once was there between both of the properties, it would be the property that circled or that's blocked off and then the property further north. There was a storage unit that was in between both properties that has been removed. So we did talk to legal and legal recommended that we bring this item to the city council so that the encumbrance could be lifted. So we're recommending approval as is our city manager. Item 3.1 is now before you.
Do I entertain a motion or...
I'll move to...
We have a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second on ordinance 4765, open it for discussion by any of the city council persons. Any questions? No questions, all those, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ordinance 4765 is approved. 3.2, Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. Second before you, seeking authorization to execute first one year renewal option for the purchase of hot and cold mixed asphalt for the Public Works Department. On March 2018, the city of Mission entered into contract with Upper Valley Materials for the purchase of hot and cold mixed asphalt. The contract terms were for one year with two one year renewal options based on 5% increase in price. Staff seeking authorization to extend contract for the first one year renewal option based on 5% increase, 5% increase in price. The agreement will extend bid number 18-136-02-15 from March 3rd, 2019 through March 2nd, 2020. And attached, I have the renewal letter from Upper Valley Materials and the original bid tabulation that was done at, at the first bid opening. Staff recommendation, it's authorization to extend contract for the first one year renewal option with Upper Valley Materials.
Do I hear a motion?
I move for approval as presented.
Second.
Do I have a second? I do have a question for purchasing. Are they here, somebody from purchasing? If not, on...
Yes.
The question is, it has to do with a 5% increase. In doing the 5% increase, would it be in compliance with our purchasing procedures?
I can, I can answer that, Mayor.
You can answer that.
Yes. So, so we did, to answer your question, Mayor, yes, all of the bids did submit a 5% increase after the first year, so it does comply.
So it was in the bid process?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.2 is authorized.
Thank you.
3.4, authorization to modify existing pest control services, Mr. Nolosa.
Sir, good evening, Mayor, city council. I come before you, seeking authorization to modify existing pest control services contract to add the Mission Event Center and the Mission Community Center. The total cost to add the facilities is $790, the remainder of the contract, which expires at the July of this year. So the total is still well within the budgeted amount and that amount is $790.
I move for approval.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve 3.4. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. 3.4 is authorized. 3.5, Chief Dominguez, ordinance 4766.
Mayor of city council, 3.5 is the approval of an ordinance authorizing the Mission Police Department Records Bureau to implement a fee schedule for our police records and miscellaneous services. The proposed fee schedule change will only apply to accident reports and offense reports. The fee for accident reports will increase from $2 to $6 and offense reports will now be 10 cents per page, whereas before there was, there was no fee for them. The change in these fees are in compliance with the Texas Transportation Code, chapter 550, section 550.65D and the Texas Administrative Code, chapter 70, section 70.10. There will be no change to our miscellaneous services, which include fingerprint cards, clearance layers and alarm permit fees. Staff and the interim city manager recommend approval for these changes.
I'll move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Ordinance 4766 is approved. 3.6, Ms. Bella.
Good afternoon, Mayor and city council. Item 3.6 is approval of the December 2018 financial statements.
I'll go ahead and wait for them.
We have total unadjusted beginning fund balance at $21,272,272,490. Total revenues for the month were $11,620,241. Total expenditures were $6,520,785, leaving an ending unadjusted fund balance of $26,371, and $371,946. Staff and interim city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion for approval?
Move for approval, Mayor.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
I just, I just got a question. We collect, Mayor, the total tax collected for December was almost $7 million, 6.9. What percentage is that of our total tax revenue?
At the end of December, we're at about 67%.
Wow. 57?
67.
67.
67, yes.
And our, our total expenditures Monday is about 3.6, correct?
Correct, yes. For the general fund.
Thank you, Ms. Bella.
Thank you.
3.7, Bella?
Item 3.7 is approval of the attached budget amendment. This budget amendment is a reclassification in the amount of $6,900 of funds from professional service to capital outlay necessary for the replacement of a server for the fire department. Staff and interim city manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion of, or approval?
I move to approve.
We have a motion and we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'm finished business on 4.2. I need a motion to untabled rezoning.
I move to untable.
We have a motion and second to untabled 4.2. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. It is untabled 4.2. It will be addressed by Ms. Acevedo.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Item 4.2 is a rezoning. It's a public hearing of a tract of land containing .94 of an acre, more or less, and being .19 of an acre, more or less, out of lot 21-9 West addition to shareland subdivision and .75 of an acre being 1.0 acres out of the south quarter of section 19 La Lomita subdivision, now lot 21-9 West addition to shareland subdivision of Porciones 53-57, less than except .25 of an acre. The request is to change the property from R2 duplex... The request is to change the property from R two duplex fourplex residential to R three multifamily residential. The applicant is Martha Sanchez, and if the council is inclined to approve this rezoning request, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. Mayor and Council, when this item last appeared in front of the city council, we did have a public hearing. However, towards the end of the public hearing, actually after the public hearing was closed, there was some information that was brought forward as to whether or not we should consider the petition that was submitted by the applicant. The applicant submitted a petition in which more than twenty percent of the property owners within two hundred feet were in opposition. We did have a chance to, since the previous meeting, we did have a chance to look at what the city had in place. And at the time of this item, when this item was considered, we had in, in place where they needed twenty percent of people within five hundred feet. However, in talking to the attorneys, both of the legal attorneys that are working currently with the city, we discovered that the state statute only requires that they have twenty percent of two hundred feet. What happened was that some of the residents in the area went on to Munich Code, and the change from two hundred to five hundred happened at the city level in August of two thousand eighteen. And if you go to Munich Code, that is still in place, the old ordinance at two hundred feet. So that's where there was some confusion, but the attorneys were able to clear it out. We did consider the petition as a valid petition. They had, I believe, seven signatures within twenty-two homes, so that equated to, far exceeded the twenty percent that's required. And we are recommending approval of the changing of this property. Some of the issues that were addressed, and I had a chance to read the petition, were more towards the city. There is some language in there that supports that by signing the petition, you are opposed to the rezoning. However, some of the items that were brought forward in the petition were drainage issues. They were also traffic issues, the area not having any sidewalks, the alleys not being paved. These are all issues that should have been addressed to the city so that the city could have addressed them, not necessarily part of the rezoning process, although I guess there are some valid points, because if they build more units, there will be an increase of traffic. Currently, this property has remained vacant for many years. That being said, we still consider rezoning the property to R three as a more, as the more viable option rather than keeping it as R two. And the reason being is that if you keep it R two, you can still do the sixteen properties or the sixteen homes that the applicant wants, but there would have to be some variances issued. So the cleanest thing would be to keep it as, as one lot and build the sixteen units without having to subdivide and break it into four lots, because it does get challenging. We prepared an exhibit that shows you what it would look like if they were to subdivide it into four R two lots, and it would look something like this. They do meet the area size requirements for duplex, fourplex, however, there would be some variances that would need to be granted. So their intent is to build sixteen units, and whether it's R two or R three, it can be done. And staff is supporting the change from R two to R three, as did the Planning and Zoning Commission. It was a unanimous approval of this item. Our city manager is also recommending approval. This is a public hearing item. Item four point two is now before you.
Mr. Acevedo, I don't know. Did you explain to the commission that they will need a super majority?
I did not. Since this item passed through the, since the petition was accepted, it would require a forfeits vote for this item to pass. The fact that the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the item doesn't, doesn't change things. You would still need a forfeits vote for this item to pass.
And the reason why is because of the petition?
Because of the petition.
Not because of, it changes it to a super majority?
Correct. It's just because of the petition.
Yes. Council, what's your wishes?
Can we discuss it before the motion, or you want to, you want a motion first?
Uh.
You want a motion first?
In order to discuss it, we have to have a motion.
My motion would be to remain, uh.
R two?
As R two. That would be my motion. So.
I'll second that.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, and this is open for discussion. Go ahead now, Ms. Nogosa.
And I, I really like this, this diagram. If not, you know, if you don't, if you can't do all four, maybe you can do three. You could do possibly twelve to sixteen units. Going this route would also, would also give the city the opportunity to expand Highland Park right-of-way and also gain, gain an improved alley, and also the utility easement could be brought up all around the, the subdivision, which would increase your water pressure, you know, your, your, it would, you would expand utilities throughout the proposed lots, which would be beneficial. The other thing is, as, you know, I'm a realtor, so when I, when I'm, when I'm buying something, I always look at, at how, how is it, how are you going to sell it? And when you cut it up like this, it's easier to sell. If you want to sell one, one lot or two lots or the whole four lots or, you know, there's more options with this format.
The family.
Yeah.
Yes, well.
So it's never been so.
Well, it, we can't, well, it's, I'm just saying that those are more options available, which you could, like I said, you could build up to sixteen units doing it this way.
Now, I did get a visit earlier today from the, from the applicant who had, I guess, talked to some of the people that had signed the petition, and he had obtained some signatures. However, at the time that we met, he still had more than twenty percent on the table. I don't know if that has changed.
Can, can you address that issue? Anybody from the family? Is there a, is there a change in the petition? And I'll put you on hold, Ms. Ochoa, I got you. But I just need to make sure so I can continue.
Yes, sir. Rogelio Sanchez, Terry Hall Northern Lights, council members, thank you. I do have four signatures, two from the first initial petition and two from the newer one. So I had the chance to speak to some of the people there on the ground, and in talking to them, you, you hear a different story as well. They really don't have an issue with us building and changing it over. Their concerns were just those of that nature, of the drainage and things like that, which, I mean, we're going to do our part as building as well. I had a letter here from one of the applicants from the first one that, they wrote here, I don't know if you'd like to see this, I mean, this is something that they just jotted down real quick.
Go ahead and read it, sir.
Well, they just said that we hereby that we are not against the new construction going on. It was a misunderstanding. They can build whatever they want. It's not our business. And then she put her phone number in there as well. And then she also put that, by the way, the man that stopped by to sign, they said that they never signed it themselves. And there was a, I was speaking to the mother of the owner of the house, who was there, I believe, at the time, and she said that she never signed anything or put anything. I showed the signature to the gentleman that lived there, and he told me that that's not his signature, and that's not his handwriting. That's what they told me, and this is what they wrote up. Mr. Canales, he also, I'm sorry? Doctor? Doctor Canales? He also drafted up something real quick and was saying that he also didn't have an issue with building in that area. I believe he had thought that it was the one.
So how many do you have on the list?
Four total, but separate, two from the previous one and two from the current one.
What do you mean by previous one? We only have one petition?
Well, there was a previous petition that, that started in, I think, in October.
But which one did you validate, Mr. Acevedo?
That one is the, the current one. And there's two signatures on a.
And you needed how many, two?
I believe I needed three, I believe.
He needed three signatures on the current seven.
So can you review those four and see if, does it make or doesn't break, or?
If he just has two, he would, he would meet the threshold. He would still.
But he said he had four, two from the previous and two from now.
But the two that signed previously are not within the two-hundred-foot radius.
Previously mean, what do you mean previously?
Previously, I mean, this item was first heard in October, the planning and zoning, and it went to the city council in November, and then it came back.
Six months before?
Yes, because they requested a variance to waive the six-month waiting period.
Mayor, but how am I supposed to believe that every single person on that petition actually signed what they knew they were signing?
Well, that's a, where staff, staff validated the, the, staff validates the petition, but, you know, I'm still a little, a little confused, because two plus two is four.
Two is four, Mayor.
But it's from two different.
Carerangs.
Petitions.
Correct.
Yeah, but, let me, two plus two is four.
Yes.
The four are addressed to which petition? The first one or the second one or both?
Two are from the first petition and two are from the petition that we are considering as valid.
As valid. And the other two, those two?
I haven't seen them, so I can't say if they would be valid or not.
Okay. That's what, that's the point I wanted to hear. That's one point I wanted to hear. So.
Yes, it's two and two.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Unless you have something else that has to do with, with a question that was in.
No, just pretty much that's it. Again, like, you know, getting down on the ground and speaking to them, one, another homeowner just wanted to.
We'll take into consideration those four, and, and I'm going to recommend that whatever we approve, we approve pending those four, you know? And, and what is valid or not valid, the petition, whether it goes to one, one level or the other level, you know, because you were advised, you needed three, you know, four is above three, and, you know, unless they, and staff needs to validate that for us.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay. Ms. Ochoa, you hit the floor now.
Well, that was one of my questions, but now I have a question for Ms. Acevedo. Okay, so P and Z and staff has approved the R three. Okay. What is the difference between the R three and the R two? Because Ms. Norrie has a motion on the floor for an R two.
To remain R two.
To remain R two and not to approve the R three. So what would be the difference for the family and just for what they have to do? The purposes of.
The main difference is that in an R two, you have to subdivide it into various lots, meeting a, a specific area size requirement. If you keep it as R three, you can keep it as one lot and build all your development in one lot. Now, I guess some of the concerns that the neighbors have is that if you, if you keep it as an R three or rezoned it into an R three, that you could potentially build more than what you can in an R two. And that's possibly true, but the applicant, ever since I've been talking to him, since he first came into my office, have always shown me, or we've always discussed just doing sixteen apartments.
So who drafted this?
This was something that we drafted to see what could potentially work. Yes. I had one of my graphic technicians earlier, just, I told him to put something together to see what can potentially be built on their property.
So Jaime, as an R three with one single lot, they can do more than sixteen units?
On an R three, you could build up to twenty-eight, two-bedroom units in one acre, and this is just shy of an acre, so theoretically, they could possibly build twenty-seven in an R three as opposed to.
So they can always come back and ask for more, to add more units, or?
Now, another thing that we have to also consider is that anytime somebody builds more than five units, they require us to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission for site plan approval. So it's not just that they come in and give us a building permit and we authorize it. It, it needs to go in front of the P and Z for their formal approval. Now, the applicant has always told P and Z as well that they're only building sixteen units. So the P and Z can, at that point, consider whether or not they approve whatever proposal comes their way.
Mayor, may I ask another question?
Go ahead.
So in an R two, how many apartments fit?
In an R two, you're allowed a maximum of four apartments per lot.
And.
So in this case, it would be sixteen?
In this case, it would be sixteen.
Mayor, may I ask Ms. Sanchez a question?
No more than sixteen.
Yes, you can.
Ms. Sanchez, can you please step forward?
Yes, sir.
First of all, I'd like to apologize for the drawn-out saga of everything you had to go through.
Thank you.
But I think, you know, towards beautification, this, you know, there's a lot of people that really want to, cannot afford a home, so this is an option that you're giving them. And I think because of the issue that's come back and forth right now, would you be okay with the R two? Because it's either that or you're going to run the risk of who, the votes out here.
I mean, it could be an R two, but we're going to have to build it up, and we didn't want to build it up. We wanted it to be just one, you know, one flat.
Yes.
We don't want to build up. We don't want to impose that kind of.
Why would it?
To the neighbors.
Why would it be an automatic that you must build up if it's an R two?
Well, because the way that we were kind of thinking to allow more space for parking and stuff, so there's no overflow, there's no problems with that, you know, that the R three allows us to work and really essentially use, try to utilize it to the fullest potential. Really, that's what it is.
It's the same space, just broken up into four lots.
Yes. But once again, with that R three, it would allow us to, you know, kind of do what we're trying to do in regards to, you know, just one, one, you know, just one floor kind of going.
But the difference in this one is that there are restrictions in between lot by lot.
Right.
You know, so they cannot have continuity of units if they need, if they want to do continuity of units. I think that's what I'm just trying to say, you know?
I don't understand that.
You know, just one whole complex, all sixteen connected.
So, Ms. Acevedo, it's already R two, though.
You know?
It's already R two, so because tonight they come in with a flat similar to this and we would.
It can be approved without no problem.
However, I guess what Ms. Sanchez is saying is that, yeah, although you can build sixteen units, they would be all scattered in, in different ways.
Yes.
As to opposed, if we were to be R three, they can organize them in a orderly manner. And I will remind you, the council and the mayor, that recently we approved a similar request down the street in front of the Sphere Memorial Library where Mr. Beto Vella requested a similar proposal where he had three R two lots. He requested that we rezon the property to R three because he wanted to build six on, on two of the lots, and then he wanted to keep the center lot for parking. So it was approved. The Planning and Zoning Commission, the city council approved that request, and that's kind of a similar request here today. They just want to make it look cleaner.
And it's a private property.
My question for you, Jaime, though, is what was the frontage on the public street at, on those particular lots?
They were wider lots, so this one only has sixty-five feet of frontage to Highland.
Right.
And those other ones probably had fifty feet to South Street.
Per lot.
Our, my.
Our property is bigger than the one that got.
Well, it's bigger in the sense that it's got more square, square feet, but, but as far as the frontage to Highland, I see that you only have sixty-five feet. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Six.
Yes, now, the, the other, the other way to, in, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Jaime, but if you were to do this and you have those three lots there, you could very easily have, like, a little covered parking area for your three lots, and they would have access to the alley to come in and out? Would that be right?
That's correct, and that was one of the reasons that we left the flag-shaped lot on the west side, so that they can have the opportunity to do four parking spaces.
And that would alleviate the traffic on that, on that right-of-way off of Highland. If three of your lots are having access from the alley. So that's, that's another, I mean, this is, that's one reason why I really like this option here.
Yeah. Okay. Ms. Sanchez, any, any points, last points?
The last point is, well, that, I mean, like I said, we could, it, it would be a whole lot better thing to do it with the R three than the R two, because the R two, because the R2, we can always go up and build more apartments.
Well, you would be limited to 16 apartments. You can do townhouse, you know, basically, four per lot.
Why would they limit it to 16?
No, we don't want to do more than 16. 16 is all we want, but we just wanted it flash. In order for R2, we would have to go up where we didn't want.
Well, I've heard... Yeah. But it's allowable to go up to...
It's allowable, but it was something we didn't want to do.
Right.
We wanted to work with everybody in the area.
It would be a whole lot prettier and nicer, really.
Yes.
But, I mean, you know, if...
I just accept it just a block over from an R2 to an R3 with Beto Vella.
I don't know who Beto Vella is. Right off the top of my head, but...
I think we've heard enough, you know? I think we've heard enough to... Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. We'll... We need to address it.
Okay.
Thank you. If we need any more information, we'll call on you.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for legal. Because we're reducing it from R3 and planning zoning went from R3 back to R2. We need to change it. We need a supermajority, am I correct?
We need a super... Well, if there's a petition... There is a petition, as I understand, according to Jaime, that's 22%. So because of that petition, we need a supermajority to approve it from R2 to R3. Now, if you remain at R2, that's... And you deny, let's see, your... See, the P&amp;Z approved it?
The P&amp;Z approved it, but the petition takes precedence over the majority of the...
Okay. So if you deny... Well, that's the question, though. You still, if you change from what the P&amp;Z does, you're... You need a supermajority as well, right?
That's correct. That's the point I was asking to see if it was validated by you, legal.
Mayor, but going back, I'm sorry, from my original request, is that I am not sure that staff has had enough time to look at every single signature to make sure that those were valid. Mr. Sanchez just came forward, and he explained to us that he had spoken to some of the neighbors, and they were not clear on what they signed. So I don't think it would be fair for the family on both sides, even the neighbors, for us to take this on right now without even having a clear whether it's supermajority or not majority.
They're not even here. They never come to a single meeting, even though they're...
That's okay, ma'am. Continue, Ms. Ochoa.
So I would...
You want to take no action?
I would like for staff to diligently look through the list and speak to those neighbors, whether they did sign or they didn't, because then that would make a big impact on supermajority or not on the livelihood of R1 or R2. I mean, R2 or R3. So I would like to see that first. Because right now, we're going to need a clear four. And possibly, we will not be... Need a four if some of those signatures were not validated.
But I think you're still going to need a supermajority because if we overturn what P&amp;Z said, even not taking into account the petition, you would still need a supermajority, right?
If...
So going back to the last meeting...
You would need a supermajority to deny the request.
So going back to the last meeting, Mayor? We already had a vote on the table, and I did not rescind my... And it had already passed. It was Mayor, Plata, and myself to give it an R3.
So we need a supermajority to overturn what P&amp;Z said, correct?
That's not the case. I believe in reading the way that the petition reads.
I'm not talking about the petition.
No, I know. But the clause in the protest by petition, I think, there's a way with the P&amp;Z vote. It doesn't consider the P&amp;Z vote.
Well...
I'm not talking about the petition.
Hold on.
Petition is valid.
Legal, go ahead.
If the petition is valid, then it would take a supermajority to pass the zoning from R3.
And if the petition is invalid, what's the result?
Then if the petition is invalid...
Let legal...
If the petition is not valid, then you'd have to have a supermajority to go against the decision.
And where does the three to two vote that we cast the last time?
So that is where I'm confused, Mr. Acevedo and Mr. Galligan, that two weeks ago, when this was brought to the table, we had already three votes. It was three to two. Then somebody in the audience came up and started talking about the signatures. So then it became a supermajority. So what I'm asking tonight, if Mayor and council will allow staff to go back and review all the signatures so that we could correctly identify how many votes is needed to pass either or.
But Jessica, what they're saying is even if the petition is invalid, so say those signatures, you know, make the petition invalid because they didn't have the 20%. We still have to have a supermajority.
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
No, we don't.
We don't. P&amp;Z approved an R3.
We would have the supermajority to bring it down back to R2.
The planning and zoning recommended this, so...
Three.
R3.
But to reverse what P&amp;Z says, don't we?
We would need four votes, yeah.
Four votes.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It's still a supermajority.
But to approve R3, we need three.
No, to overturn. But if we don't have those four votes, then it states R3 as what the P&amp;Z recommended. If... Okay, they recommended R3, right? At the last meeting, we voted three to two to uphold what the planning zoning...
But the point of order was asked about the petition.
Right, right.
Whether you met the 20%. And we told staff that we were going to table it so they could go back and validate or not validate the... And now, Mr. Sanchez has brought in two and two. Two plus two is always four, you know? Used to teach seventh grade math before.
And staff has already had a chance...
And now we need, is the petition valid at 20% or not? Because if it's not valid, then the decision stays as the way it was before, and R3 is recommended.
Staff has not...
Still, the legal I need to ask is we have a motion on the floor and a second.
They've got three total.
What do we do with that motion on the floor and second?
They can... If it's the desire of the commission to do... To table the item again, then you can rescind your motion and your second. And then you can have a motion and second to table it to verify the petition.
So now I have to go back to the persons that made the motion and the second to see if you choose to rescind or not?
And I'll rescind. But the problem that I have from a legal standpoint is that we can't start from scratch now with the petition. Like, you know, we can't come back in two weeks with 15 names all of a sudden. That has to close. The petition time must close.
Which was the petition time was today. The Ms. Acevedo gave the...
And just verify it. Because if not, then it would be... Well, it would be illegal, actually.
Yes. So you rescinding your second?
If only to verify the names.
For validation by...
Process only. Understanding that the petition time is closed.
Yes. Okay. Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Okay. We have a...
Well...
Go ahead. Just to validate.
Yes, I understand that. But if we take a vote right now, then we don't have Mr. Spoor. We don't give him the opportunity to say what... We've had him ask him.
We've already had the public hearing, so...
Okay. So then...
This is not a public hearing.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, but you...
But you allowed one side to come to the podium.
Well, but with all due respect, at the last meeting, Mayor, you allowed them to speak and bring forward stuff that staff didn't bring up. And I never rescinded my motion.
Yes. I allowed them because staff had the questions.
Okay.
And then they had the answers. So this is not a public hearing, so...
As far as those four signatures, I haven't reviewed to see whether or not they're valid or not.
Yeah. Okay. Now I need to entertain a motion to table.
So moved.
A motion to table and Mr. Martinez, you second it?
Sure, yes, Mayor.
Motion and second to table for the purpose, if I'm correct, for validating the 20% or not.
Correct.
Once we come... Then we'll take it from there. Any other questions?
And I just want to make it clear, Mayor, and I don't know, Randy, if this is possible, Mr. Perez, you will be checking every single signature and making sure that the resident knew what they were signing and if they actually signed.
They can't be coming back with two names.
There's only seven signatures.
I know.
If that's the wishes of the council, we can do that.
But he just did two. Yes, please. Thank you.
Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now I'll entertain 4.3, and I would need a motion to untable 4.3. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion and second to untable. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Mayor requests that no action be taken on this item because we're going to... And because of no action, we're going to move it to... We're going to call a special meeting in approximately two weeks. Am I correct, Mr. Perez? When Mr. Rico Villarreal can come in and present to us our questions that we need to answer? And so, at that time? So are we all in okay? Not in okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Now move to 5.0 and 5.1 interim city manager's comment.
Yes, Mayor. Just to advise the public and the mayor and the council about our... We will be none the office on Monday, the 18th, due to President's Day holiday. But we'll be available as needed. That's it.
Good. 5.2, I just need to let the public know, and we have posted that we are having Mission Day tomorrow and Wednesday. The whole council will be over there, and we'll be traveling to Austin on behalf of the city to go tackle some of the issues directly with our state representatives and state senators and the governor of Texas. We have a two-day pre-planned activities as far as that is concerned. Also, Mr. Perez, I would like to ask for, in the next city council meeting, an update on the status of the comprehensive audit that we have had. Requested that, I don't know if we hired anybody or what the status of it is as far as that is concerned. 5.3, city council comments, and I'll start with Mr. Martinez. Nothing, Mayor? Ms. Garcia?
I guess I just have a question in reference to the climate survey that was performed. Are we going to be reviewing that anytime soon?
There would... The answer is yes. Do you want a workshop for that or...
Well, I...
I thought we had already done that.
Well, we had that one meeting, but then I thought we were going to review the comments